This would be if we had the warranty for tractors we currently have?
Or the other rules of which is for ordering tractors with a warranty throughout the whole period.
Five, five years warranty already out.
Five years for thirty-five dollar damage, which is six hundred dollars to currently now.
How come you're so early?
I should come early and then I get crap for coming early and get crap for coming late.
For staying in use of showing up for my sign goes.
Making up your lost time. I'm honest, I didn't, uh, my phone died and so I didn't have a clock and I just sort of estimated the time and I guess I estimated. Now I record that, I watch that made.
Do you watch it?
No. We used to.
I do.
It used to be the noon hour sort of ritual.
I used to watch it because, um, come in late for dinner or by the time you dish up your plate and sit down with me, it was about a half hour worth of, um, dining time.
And her was kind of like a look at me. She's still a good looker.
I remember the other night she had to be at least two years of more.
Used to be bold and beautiful and don't smoke.
Oh yeah, I wish. Don't smoke, starts with one.
Turned a lot, so I don't know if it is or not.
I'm gonna eat too much. Eat too many.
Hi, bro.
Hello. Hey. I think that. Oh, okay. I'm gonna go. Just tell, just tell. I don't want you to go through on this. I'm still on my first file there.
I can't believe them getting here early enough sign bells if they don't hold up. He's, he's very worried that he'll give it back when he's too late sign bells now shows up and they start to play it in.
Wow, they're waiting. Whatever.
Well, flip on our send.
Whatever. I used to get my socks made with the company. They always ask, what kind you want, take or ten?
Take or ten?
Yeah.
Can't look. Is teletype services, is that, uh, like, uh, what is?
Is it law enforcement?
Yeah.
Well, they're tied into a state network. Back in my day, it was teletype. I don't know if you still have that.
But it's for just like the, the tie end of the state?
Yeah.
For the?
That's what it was. Here's your, I don't know what the current say.
So it's apparently it's got one. I thought it was like a stenographer thing or something.
How long did it take that lease? That was nice. I don't know. That's what it's cost. I said, I said we did it anyway. That's the money. I didn't understand if it can carry for more.
What do you know that?
How long?
It expires this fall.
This fall.
Okay. It's on the agenda to terminate the lease. At least that's my suggestion. Uh, I seen it on there and that's what I was wondering if it's close or.
Do we have grounds for that?
It's normal renewal.
No, I mean, can we terminate early?
I asked them that if they would be willing to terminate early, but it was not.
We don't know.
We have to do it in sixty days and not see who else. So.
Practically there.
Practically there. But I asked them if we could vacate earlier. Cause I think that won't help. It might be.
Okay, are these undidents?
Undidents. If somebody's undoing it.
I'd listen to it, but none of his, some of his.
You're on the test.
It's expensive. The people that have left people happy. This is dangerous. It's legit.
Oh, this is the test. I thought this was just the cops.
Oh, that's a good test.
Hundred twenty-five degrees.
No, they, they have the cops. You got that.
I assume that you got this egg, the, the killing for weed pest?
Yep.
I assume someone, they, they looked it over before they.
Well, hopefully.
That they read, that they're good and whatever.
I hope the newly formed weed board is new, uh, passed.
You just have to assume that you are against it before.
Yeah, cause I was under the impression that was down, it would be signed by somebody on that board. Like whoever does really pass it by the way. But, but not me.
I have no idea what's in fast, but it's expensive.
Put on some money, I don't know what it is. Says man on the exit of business, right? It's a collection.
Yes, it is. So is it fresh or is it?
It's taken away or?
I think it is.
That's from actually.
This is a legitimate product.
A lot of money. Totally. From my other hand or?
It's for anybody. I just was amazed that I'd get such a product.
I think they pulled out of nowhere. Yesterday, two days ago.
You should read.
I just want to try.
Read the instructions back. They need to listen.
But they, there's a. Is that just for one project or is that?
Maybe you went to under. Yeah, that's just flat out. Sometimes they'll put some in that patching device that that's to keep one. Yeah, they. Put it in a bulb storage tank here and then they.
I was trying to figure out what they. Why do we have the bill for just?
Well, is it our?
Is that our signature?
Yeah, cause he is exactly. Yep. And the sheriff's office is here in contract. We get this. The rest of us. Basically has a little contract. The rest of us just eat it.
Alright.
So Jim.
What?
How deep? The content is missing here.
It doesn't say?
It does. But it does say into slightly, but it didn't say up slightly.
I can.
Right. How do you know what that product is?
Well, I don't know, but when you guys are talking.
Please don't make me like build that so you don't have much disappearing.
It should.
Yeah.
Well, that was so hard to handle. Let's get that. I'm glad you're willing to help. She gave it to me. Now the subject.
Suppressors. Hard filters.
They're also noise suppressors. I'll say Mr. Ozil's alive. Oh, do you do that? I can't imagine you were in that kind of shape.
You have to take those off. You can't control.
Any better than that.
Oh, maybe it's for after hours.
They could be. I don't know what to say. Gee, there was something.
You have the problem, I don't know what.
No, you don't.
That's good.
Oh, okay, this is sad.
I'll take that one.
Oh, I'll take that out.
We're good.
Yeah, it was good.
Twenty-six, ten. The dog.
Oh, yeah.
And twenty-four, ten.
Oh, the dog.
Is this all the stuff that you have in unisex? That's not, you don't eat this, do you?
Six hundred and fifty-two dollars, nine.
Six hundred and eight.
Or nine, eight. Okay.
Is this real?
It is, isn't it? Look at the instructions, they're very, very.
Do you want to press it?
Somebody got a.
You definitely don't eat it.
Wow.
I know some people that would need some toy size. Use finger to install. No, just because it's an acreage that.
Oh, wow. Do you remember Little House by the Shell? You did all the olders and things. He had a bathtub that could take a bath in twenty cents.
Really?
Do you remember that move? No, I don't. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. They're a bit of a fool.
Is that where all the Jones children went on Saturday night?
No, but I mentioned there were lots of armed hands, rich hands who came out on Saturday night and took a bath.
Absolutely. Especially a good one, mom.
Jim didn't need that that often. No. I didn't get. Off. He's got these. He doesn't need any else.
It's not being though?
I didn't need it all.
There's different applications for mild.
He does.
Yeah.
I also.
No. And I just have to get the barcode on, please, so I can get a fair.
Hard as hell. Available on your favorite stores. That or not that. What was it called? I don't even, I don't know about. Doing X, Y, Z.
So, do we sign each of these documents individually for the canvas?
Mostly that stuff that we list to the canvas.
List here.
In fact, I think almost all of them.
Change the date sooner if someone appears.
But. So. That's how tide, you can just go reverse, reverse your shit on the direction. Well, the reverse with his body, so.
It'd be like a medical term.
Name China.
Not according to U.S. tax.
They're probably small.
Shit you find, Jim.
Whatever. Got that motorcycle running?
I'm a little. I just don't read the volume. But I looked at it and probably got a copy of everything they put in.
I think it's, uh, getting, she's getting better about getting them to us.
Is she?
Uh, sometimes it'd be three or four months before she'd get them and they were helping pretty considerable. I mean, it still costs all the same, but sometimes it does come to be.
You know where the word D or the letter D comes in DA, where they got that? Couple of days. Which is randomly assigned to, uh, to choose their path, which was the operational overload was going to initiate. Or they call it D-Day.
So it's like the day.
Yeah. There's a code for what it might be. We got any more for that? We got any potential bombshells?
Well. Are you saying, these are responses, get with them. Okay, I don't think we'll get that. You're okay with that?
We're watching the news commercial. There you go.
I know.
We've got a minute to do that. Cool. Do you remember the deal with killing? When, when the towers are lifted. Hey, Jones? We need. We need to have the town and the team will start.
Oh, okay.
Maybe during an intermission.
Is it one hour, man?
Okay, being one o'clock, uh, we'll have meeting later, everybody please stand and join me in the touch allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would look at the flats. On the second page, we will not be doing either commit to focus. And because the sense clap has the language on it for the planning zoning commission, we'll need to reset basically pre convenience planning zoning section. To do that one.
Do you want to do that at the start?
No. I don't.
What can you do? Just let us know in the one bit.
There's nobody here waiting for it. And then if we add to the bills, we've got a provision on here for adding some bills that we didn't get in. And it's just three of them, Beagle County Sheriff for pushing a pair, Charles Nicksher, pushing a pair, somewhere patrol for an ad and. Income title. For, I believe that's a background on a tax. So. Who would normally look at big bills.
Okay.
Um, if you're allowed to add that.
Uh, I've got one thing to add, it will be, um, on the second page in the highway department.
Highways on the first front page.
Road and Bridge Financial Review, um, the corporate maker is going to do a short presentation on, uh, the. Adoption or adaptations we've made to the department budget for twenty twenty-four. So. So that's back to Road and Bridge Financial Review, twenty twenty-four operations.
Okay, anything else?
Anybody else got anything?
With us. I will be approved with those changes.
Okay, got a motion to approve the agenda with those changes made?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Showing none, I'll favor I.
Alright.
Upon the same sign, motion carries.
In contrast, attending the items today.
That from me.
Okay, we have the minutes from May seventh and May thirteenth, May seventh for the radio meeting, the thirteenth for who am I meant to appoint to the service office.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, Jim Jones. Any discussion?
Very final motion of both six minutes?
Yes.
Second bell, Jim?
Yes.
Hearing no discussion, I'll favor I.
Alright.
Upon the same sign, motion carries.
Uh, there she is.
I'm here.
You are?
Am I okay?
Yes. Speaking of the minute from Beagle County, this is a weekly about the.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. Doug, do you want me right here? Okay, are you ready to slideshow? I'm doing good. Okay. Perfect. All right, so my name is Savannah Bigman and I'm the diversion coordinator over in, um, Beagle County. And I also have a few other roles that I have. Um, this is only the best. There you go. Okay, so my other roles that I have in Beagle County is I'm the director of human services, much like Doug is here, where we get to watch tax payer dollars. Um, so I come for relief, so I also do that. Um, and then I serve as victim services for ten rural counties, however, um, currently Nikki Beckner is, um, your victim services. Her and I both work in Beagle County and we have split it five in five, so anyway, we, we do that. She wanted more workload and so, yeah, so that's what we're doing there. Um, so I'm hopefully, um, gonna educate you a little bit about the diversion program, people want to see the next slide. Um, so our diversion program has proven to be successful in both adults and youth across South Dakota that have been involved in criminal activity. So I'm gonna be presenting to you the four types of the diversion program that I currently coordinate in Beagle County. Uh, our programs for the youth are approved by the Department of Juvenile Justice Reinvestment Initiative. Uh, keep in mind that the diversion program is dictated by your county, so I'll be working closely with law enforcement and then also Mr. Hanson. Um, and I'm happy to facilitate the program for a year, see how it goes, what you think, um, if you should wish to add this to your, um, twenty, twenty-five budget. So, um, the next piece of lies I'm gonna break down will be each type of diversion program, all of them share a common goal. A common goal is going to be, um, accountability given back to the county and fixing the violation to remain at law by the citizen. Then also avoiding conviction, so with this whole one moment you're ahead of me here. Okay, so the first one I'm gonna show you is the CAT program. Sorry.
That's it.
The CAT program are for offenses, for an example like traffic violations, somebody driving with no insurance, and then also for juveniles to get underage consumption. Accountability actions, for example, for this CAT program would be five hours of community service and attending a course to help them improve life decisions. Most importantly, fixing the violation. Um, all actions typically need to be completed within thirty days. Okay, for the next one. The next one is a positive diversion program. This is where I work, uh, closer with the youth. Um. And examples for referrals for this offense would be defiance, turency, marijuana use and theft. Um, to hold the juveniles accountable with the, with these offenses would be like community service. A course that improves decision making, um, or a referral recommendation to a mental health agency for support. And then I also encourage face-to-face meetings with the student, the parent and the school principal. And then I often also suggest getting a part-time job. In some cases, I do like to do drug and alcohol testing just to see where they're at, so hopefully getting them into sobriety as well, if that should be part of the case, so. All right, the third one we have is the restorative justice program. I went through six months of training, uh, for this program. And this, this is very powerful. Um, both the victim and the defendant are present in the circle. This program is suggested by our team based on criminal offenses such as assault, sexting or theft. Um, this program gives the victim a voice of how the crime has impacted him or her emotionally, physically and financially. And I'll take questions here as we get going if you, if you would like, so moving on. And that is the DUI diversion program that we have. Um, this is for first time offenders who choose to drive under the influence of drugs and alcohol. The biggest reason for the DUI diversion program is the offender would be at risk for losing their South Dakota driver's license. The biggest hookup would be that they have to spend forty-eight hours in the county jail. The DUI diversion program can be for both adults and juveniles, however, the juvenile layout is slightly different. Um, for example, we can't put the juveniles in, uh, the juvenile detention center without a court order, so that would be an example. Go ahead. All right, how does the county benefit? What happened next? All right, so getting back to the community, through community service, we play, we believe plays a very important vital role. Um, it gives the offender time to effectively think about the criminal activity that was committed. Um, it also promotes work ethic for both youth and adults. Um, examples of community service would be nonprofit agencies in Beagle County, for example, we use our animal shelter, senior center, churches, cemeteries. United Way, the city parks and rec as well, so that's, that's something that I can explore once we, um. Once we establish partnership. All right, next is the evidence-based tax. Um, the evidence is out there, use it. So the state funding is available, Governor Gnome, as a thank you for reinvesting time into our youth. Um, to build a successful youth right in our community, so savings to the taxpayers, um, for court-appointed attorney fees, which result in leads. Time, just think of all the people it takes to bring a court hearing together. And what are we trying to accomplish when criminal activity occurs? Let's take no insurance for an example. So if an offender is in a, let's say it's a car accident and the offender has no insurance. And the driver is not at fault. What would you want to happen?
Restitution.
Yeah. Pay for damages. Make them get car insurance so it doesn't happen to somebody else, right? Well, this can all be accomplished through the diversion program. Now let's take the same example, if they go to court, they lose their license for thirty days. The conviction will affect their insurance premium over time. Resulting in an SR twenty-two plan, which is a very costly insurance. And nobody monitors the repayment of the restitution. Overall, diversion helps your community be safer and it provides assurance. All right, so resources in your county, um, again, I'll be researching with stakeholders, um. Your, maybe even commissioners, um, and then also the schools to find out what. um, and then also the schools to find out what is available here in Hans County, um, once our partnership is secured. But, um, we constantly are meeting every month with the other diversion stakeholders across South Dakota, and with the Andy Brokenleg. And we have, um, J.J.R.I. funds, and the D.S.S. also has funds that go on spent. And so, we'll make sure that those are getting spent, put back into our communities, and building up what we have right here. All right, how can the county help? So, the diversion is the answer to keeping youth and criminals, um, out of the, youth and adults, excuse me, out of the criminal justice system. I just ask that you see the positive changes that all of us diversion coordinators are trying to make across South Dakota. The energy and the efforts are worth it in making a difference in our youth in Beagle's open. Um, I'm in for Hans County, building successful and happy youth right here. All right, next. Oh, go ahead, did you have a question, sir?
I have a lot.
Okay, perfect, I will take, I mean, just a minute.
That's fine.
Yes, okay, keep going. All right, next is what you're looking at, the amount of ball we're going to leave for, right? How much will it cost to Hans County? So, this is, um, a yearly share that we're looking at. So, currently, 2024, you just have victim services, and if you can see what you're paying out. Um, adding diversion and victim services in 2025 would bump up Hans County to 4,500, which is, I believe it's partially 2,000, it's about dollars there. Um, I'm gonna give you some time to reflectively think about that. Um, if you're seeing the same services, just adding different. The reason that you probably see Kingsbury and Spink County more, they have court twice a month, which typically results in more cases as well, so. We can always come back. All right, the next is gonna be an example. So, for fiscal year 2023, for juvenile reimbursement, so right now, currently, it's at, Governor Noem, um, incentivizes the counties for putting time into you. So, $250 per juvenile comes back to Hans County if you participated in the program. So, Governor Noem passed a law, sent Bill 47, just recently, starting to July 1st. Um, each juvenile will be reimbursed to each county. Each county will be reimbursed per juvenile, $750, um, for successful completion. So I'm gonna give you an example. If you should piggyback off of what Beagle County is doing, we're charging a diversion fee. And it comes back to the county. There's nowhere that says we can't do that right now. So, for youth, for example, um, so you are getting, let's say, say you have four juveniles that most common is underage consumption. So you have four juveniles, which underage consumption is a class two misdemeanor. So, we would charge the fee or cost if they could go. We typically do $178.50. So you add those together, times them by all of it, so four juveniles, your county would be looking back, looking at giving $3,714 back. So now, let's take four adults that get a DUI. You put them through the DUI diversion program. So that's a class one misdemeanor, so it'd be $200 plus the court cost of $98.50. Again, the money comes back to the county, not to the court courts. Same thing with the, uh, blood testing fee, if that also isn't there, they're responsible for paying that. But this is just an example of what comes back directly to your county. So, putting that all together, four adults that got a DUI, um, would be $1,194. So that's just an example for you to see the reimbursement that comes back. Yeah, so, what's, uh, obviously, we can customize whatever we want with Mr. Anson and law enforcement, um, and how you guys wanna go about that. But, um, I just ask that you consider putting diversion into your 2025 budget, and I'll take some questions, so which do you like to go first?
Yeah. I think we'll all find.
So you can make a referral to me, or Mr. Anson can make a referral to me. So let's say you put in your offense report that I recommend after talking to the parents. Um, I recommend that the diversion program would be a good idea for this youth. I believe they can, you know, utilize some resources. We all know that if the youth goes to court and they get fined, uh, for underage consumption, they get fined $50, that's enter outdoor, maybe a hundred. So, um, so I guess that's up to, that's the big seller history.
Offender's agent underage consumption, and you say they qualify, we believe they qualify, he held them, you need to go to court, probably pay an undercover fine, according to those diversion programs.
Sure, so.
It's gonna make them a lot of.
So doing what is right is not always the easier way, and that's something to tell them. So we would obviously provide the tools, um, to them to help them get back on track. It'd benefit them more, keep the criminal history, criminal record clean. If it could affect them for employment. Let's say it's petty theft. Let's say it's simple assault, even worse. You know, maybe now they can't work at the local nursing home. You know, maybe they can't, um, you know, maybe they, they're hoping to get a job at your local grocery store, and now they can't because of a petty theft on your record.
So this goes to, you want to proceed it?
Yes.
Okay, there, now get out your call.
No, this is all pre-court, pre-conviction.
Okay, so the court services has nothing to do with it?
No, no.
They still have their own diversion program?
No, I don't believe so. No, 'cause your court service officer here is Skip McQuitty. No, he does not do diversion.
So if they get a DUI, say an adult, what happens? They go through the diversion program, and then they re-offend, and they go back on track?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. So the DUI diversion program, they have to remain a law-abiding citizen with no further DUIs for two years, for sure. Uh, what I do is I file a dismissal without prejudice, or that, hey, your back boy would end up doing it, whichever. But, um, we would do a dismissal without prejudice, and they would sign a guilty by power of attorney, or guilty that they are guilty of that crime. However, it does not get filed with the court, it stays right in our offices. Um, and then we, obviously, anytime they would get another DUI, criminal history is renewed, if they see there's a dismissal without prejudice, so. That's a two-year, they have to remain law-abiding for two years.
The first one is not, and prosecutor on a second violation.
So this, so the DUI diversion program should only be for first-time offenders. However, I have had a unique situation where somebody took a suspended imposition of sentence, and somebody also, um, it was greater than 10 years prior. So that person really was looking at their third, truthfully. Um, but they did do the diversion program, however, we tweaked it, where they had to stay, um, five days in the county jail, pay for all costs versus 48 hours.
But in theory, if they have been diverted on a first offense, kick break, uh, they're never gonna pay advice for that through the court system, because it can't be, uh, acted upon upon a second violation, that, that first one?
So I'm gonna go back, are you talking about a youth?
Yes.
Okay, so underage consumption for a youth, and your question is, if it's a second underage consumption, and they have the diversion program? They can.
When they go to court, is that a dismissal? Or first admission?
No, I mean, it'll, it'll be there that they had on their, on the counties.
The judge won't know it?
No, probably not, unless a ticket was filed through the court courts.
Why wouldn't?
But this is to keep it out of the court courts, correct?
Correct, yes.
Why wouldn't they get them filed through the court courts?
Like, this, this is basically another suspended in. If they go through, like, this is a first suspended in, and then if they go get one for two years, they get one their third year, then that'd be their first DUI. And if these are suspended in on that, because the judge doesn't have any knowledge of this one. So you could have two free DUIs, and then your third one could actually be your first. I just, yeah, it seems like, I, I think it's a good thing for youth in certain places. I think it has the same, but I also, right now, feel that the courts are so soft on the juveniles that they're really not being held accountable either way. I feel like this gives them another free, even adults with DUIs or things like that. That's the way I see it, but that's just my opinion. I think it's a good idea, and it's a good program for people that, um, actually do wanna change, but I also feel it could be used for.
Right, so it's all up to the person to make the decisions to change their life. Ultimately, it's gonna be up to law enforcement and Mr. Anson's office if they wanna offer the diversion program to the youth.
Is there any interface between this program and court?
No, they're completely different.
Are they?
Yes, this is pre-conviction, pre-court. So the biggest reason, for example, if somebody, you know, that is at risk for losing their driver's license, they could potentially lose their job. You know, you have somebody that's sprained for a Tegra, um, you have a UPS driver. You know, they made a poor decision, they know it, they're owning up to it, and, you know, they're, that would be an example. It could be an example of a domestic violence situation where, sorry, guys, but the guy popped his wife, and he's never done that before, let's say, and no history of it. And we're gonna provide a restorative justice circle to try to bring out the underlying and talk about the situation, so the victim has a voice of how that made her feel, and how they need to move forward. So there's different types of the diversion, um, yeah.
How is this not described as a reward for bad behavior?
So.
If they're not paying the consequences by going through the court system and losing that job, or losing that license, or having to pay three times what their, present their parents have been paying for insurance, what consequences is there to it?
Sure, so you can look at it that way.
I'm not looking at it, I'm asking you.
Yeah.
Are we rewarding bad behavior through this program?
So again, we are not doing, we're not taking the easy way out, if you will. We're fixing the problem, we're giving back to the community.
In what sense?
Community service, and we're making them either get insurance on their vehicle or providing a tool to them, so they understand the risks that drugs and alcohol, for example, if that's the offense, um, can have on their life.
You think they don't understand the risks?
Right, so it's the what happens to them, the why behind it.
Wouldn't, wouldn't a sincere plea to the judge or the courts, um, have the same effect of, uh, not as harsh of a sentence? And don't we have probation services in place for almost the same thing?
Well, like, like, put the DUIs and first-time, first-time offenses, you get a flag or a suspended in, takes it off your record. So that's kind of like, like what she's saying, you don't usually do this, it's the stupidest mistake, and the court's offered that suspension, and then it's like, okay, you screwed up once, we get it, and never do it again, and that's, that's your, you know, you still pay your fine, you still have your consequence. But you get a start, you get a start over, right?
Nobody uses a suspended gun for a class two misdemeanor?
No, but not for class two, but for a DUI or something like that.
Look, if the advantage is there, you have, you have received your lenience, but it is on record.
Yes.
It can be brought back up.
If you, yeah, if you screw it up, so. Yeah, I, I just, I just feel like this is another way to get around the system, I just.
Rebecca, wanna weigh in?
Um, I can tell you Elton is not interested in diversion.
Is that why he's not here today?
No, but he had his beer, he had the round, so that's why.
Rebecca said he is not, or is?
He's not interested.
We have our, I mean, and here we're looking at, you know, we have a speaking committee that takes his job seriously, and our judge is pretty fair with sentences, and I feel like this is one of the very, very few counties that actually, well, you can count it. Everywhere else just dismisses everything, and it's, it's, it's being, the effects of that are being shown every day, in my opinion, throughout communities, that is, their problems arise, they don't. I feel like our county wants to secure the actual whole people count more.
If there aren't painful consequences to bad behavior, you're just asking.
Look, and also, if it's hot, we won't do it either.
Right.
Yeah, so again, today I'm here letting you know that the option is out there for your county to invest, uh, you know, into the community members when decisions are made. Um, and hopefully, we build positive and adult backup. Um, and just a reminder, Governor Noem does have the incentive initiative out there to reimburse you at $750 per juvenile.
Isn't it the blood, just like sure that that bill, um, you know?
She signed it.
She signed it, it's a law, but it was passed by, it's, right?
Yes.
She didn't pass it.
I'm a great believer in second chances, especially for kids. But if the, if the court system and Elton's office as prosecutors already take this stuff into consideration, I'm not sure if I see the necessity of paying for it another time. That's my opinion.
Right, and you don't have to make a decision today, but that's fine. If you already do want to make that decision, you'll still be able to receive victim services and they do sign a contract, and then the dollar amount would remain the same, um.
The services is a huge asset.
Yeah, it's, it is very, we appreciate.
The other thing, yeah, that is absolutely, they give away some victims, victims are already going through a lot, and it's hard for them to stand up for themselves, and it's hard for them to find those resources, and that's what they do, and just because I disagree with this doesn't mean I'm, I'm a, you know, doesn't take away your job at all, I just, I think.
Yeah, it benefits, it benefits, um, Beagle County, but that, you know, it's, it's certainly up to you all, whether you want to add that as an option for your county members.
Doug, would we properly decide that today?
No.
Later, project.
Who's, who's liaison to Elton's office? Why don't we, whoever's liaison to Elton's office, uh, make a point of liaison, talking with Elton before our next meeting and get his input on this? We've got chains, uh, Rebecca has kind of given us a feeling of what Elton's thought is.
And again, my purpose of being here is just so you could think about it prior to your budget screening. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you, thank you so much.
See you again.
Dana has, must have did not think that. What's happening here? Uh, in my folder is a letter from the C and C requesting permission to display public fireworks and production of fireworks.
We have too many papers in all that.
I will approve. I'll start with the permit.
The request is from Talasandus from the North C and C. Motion to approve, is there a second?
The one second is there.
Okay, motion a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Upon the same sign, motion carries.
I don't really have anything for you, except what is going to be in on the agenda. Um, Mike Averin and Mike Donlin both are up for reacquaintance, so we just have to, they both want to stay on, the board approved.
I would, we confirm that, we have to, do we?
Do we need to confirm that? I mean, it's library's business.
I don't really.
We ratify it.
Yeah.
We ratify it.
Motion to approve, second. Motion to approve, second, so discussion. Hearing none, on paper A.
Aye aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, and again, I want to invite you to come to the library.
What's nice?
Thank you, yeah, it's uh, it's been a lot of fun today, we got our first storytime, and we had we had coming fifty degree kids in there, and the space, the way we rearranged it really helped accommodate all those little kids from the storytime.
Thank you, Hannah, thanks.
We visited the uh, community health nurse, community health program. We got the impression from the discussion last month, you were not interested in continuing things as they presently are, so I crafted a letter to the hospital telling them, well, we're not just using that space, because if nothing else, the Dr. Amber Vanderwerf, she was willing to let her office be used by the local staff or personnel, so we'll be all in good, we'd do it anyway.
They're all here, security, whatever, between the two offices in that, they're, they're able to keep it.
She has locking file cabinets. She has no reservations.
Yes, that's the way.
So Rebecca looked that letter over and told me if you want to change it anyway, or?
What was their response when you mentioned this possibility?
To the hospital?
Yeah.
They don't know.
He has, he has, that's what the letters were.
Letters in the, uh...
I thought you had discussions in the, right, one letter.
Except for renewal normally this fall? Every fall, if we don't do anything, we renew in the fall, so.
Do you know what corporate entity actually owns that building, yeah, the lot, it's...
Not aware.
Okay, it is there?
No, not on any of it. Except to...
Does AKE own it, or does Han County own it?
AKE.
I don't know what it is.
I don't, I read it, it seems, yeah.
Move to approve, settle right here.
Yes.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the letter to Han County Memorial Hospital about renting that space, so any discussion? Hearing none, on paper A.
Aye aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
There's a spot, and they're free to sign it, Jim, you know, to deliver it by hand or mail it. Uh, that takes a step ahead of department. One thing that I did want to talk to about the inter-verse side of this. Um, I was visiting some other auditors, and they don't physically do anything to change their minutes, so if they discover, they do once, and then done. Are you guys okay with we do it that way? So we write up what we wanted to say on a separate, separate page, and then we would pass that, and then they can part and parcel the original, we would alter the original, we would just add to it.
Is that more or less work for you?
It's irrelevant. It's tougher for me to go in and reword minutes.
So in the interim, it'd be easier?
Yep.
Okay.
However, I will redo it so the accountability and official public record is correct.
Okay. Please.
Dakota, you weren't here yet, uh, we did add to the Rover Bridge Financial Review section, uh, discussion about what we changed in the 2025 operations.
Very much. I know it was too late for me to put it in there, but if I'm...
We approved it at the beginning.
Yeah, it'd be good. All right, well, starting out with the adoption of Beagle County's True North Steel bid. I don't think it's anything new, you can look at it before, you guys just never addressed it officially, so.
I know we've done it for several years, and they actually produce it for people coming with retention, that it would be shared with others.
So we've got all this, we've got all of this online, if you guys want to scroll through it, for prices. Jeff, do you want to, do you have a particular one that you usually buy?
Uh, no, I use the smaller ones all day, do you? They're your small circuit.
They could be adopted, yeah, I agree.
I'll sign it.
We've done it every year, yes.
Got a motion in a second to adopt Beagle County's bids from True North Steel, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So any discussion on that?
Yep.
Not really, do you guys have anything to say about it?
Hearing none, on paper A.
Aye aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, fine. So I noticed in the minutes um that the wording was not correct on some of the bids, and somehow amongst all the words, many, many words, it didn't get changed, so. And then I noticed the highlighted bids are the parts that need to be put in instead of what is there. On my sheet, it's green, I notice under residents it's...
That's what it, it's what you tend to change.
Yeah, the SP is should be.
Yeah.
So on the eight table prices, their bid said one eight four, renewable gasoline fuel taxes, and I believe it's, it's one eight three on the other bid, but it was one eight four on this one.
I move to approve the addendum.
Second. And this would be addressed as an addendum to the minutes, correct, Doug? Okay, we've got a motion to approve in a second by Dan Jensen, so any discussion on the addendum to the minutes? On paper A.
Aye aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
All right, so we have to get those corrections recorded properly. Um, also, Chris and I have the Co-Res Association of County Highway Superintendent's Office Personnel Workshop coming up in the year on June forty fifth, Crossroads, it's a hundred dollars per person, and if you're curious, you can put the itinerary and signup sheet online, but we would like approval to go.
Well, I think consensus is one, isn't it?
Consensus of the board is, that's right.
Perfect. And then Jeff, I guess, is looking for approval to attend the same summer meeting in Pier on June twelfth and thirteenth, and that's no cost.
Consensus is there.
And then we are talking about the two leased John Deere tractors, um, which I made a spreadsheet for for you guys, just kind of go with the differences. It was a surprise, and so suggesting we look into, look into newer ones. We find we'd actually be saving money by switching, so.
This is what we discussed last month and asked them to check into it and bring back. So were there links on the agenda to those documents?
There are, there are links, and today maybe that documents for the bids, for the proposal, I guess it is. So you see our original, our original one for the two tractors that we leased in twenty twenty-one on, around there, the cost of the extended warranty is going to be seven thousand four hundred nineteen, and that's each tractor, right?
That's per annum?
That's, that's not annual, that's per...
That's a one-time fee.
Thirty-six months?
For three years.
For the final three years of your lease, with the same forty-eight dollars of your lease as well.
Okay, that's seven thousand dollars, twice a year?
Right, that's right. Some time, that's actually a range tractor. But with that being said, how we got started on this is then that would be in addition to your lease payment that you got to cover up in December.
Right, about fifty-two thousand six hundred and ten dollars on top of that. So if you look, if we were to get two new leases, newer tractors.
Right now.
It, it's going to be a hundred dollars more for a payment for the next five years.
Annual payments.
Yeah, annual payments.
But we don't have the warranty payment for the three years, and the new lease has five years of warranty included.
The new lease is figuring a five-year warranty already in it, um, so then you wouldn't have to have, maybe this way it's set up, it's been but you wouldn't have the new warranty payment in this budget cycle with your current lease payment.
Plus, one of the two tractors will have a front PTO and three-point, so they can run the snow blower on the front, and we won't pay chiropractic bills for looking backwards all day.
What reason would they be to not do that?
I, I see, they look like the smaller tractors. They are twenty horsepower less, but talking with Jeff, the original tractors were just what was available, and then we had talked that this, yes, twenty horsepower less would not be conducive or do what you do, that actually size more correctly, and you'd be using your equity that you have in your lease already to get the payment down to where it is.
Do we need to make that decision today?
I don't know why we wouldn't, it's...
Well, I know we'd go with that.
Otherwise, we're in operations already with tractors that don't have warranty rights.
And that is, I provided that uh, warranty that is figured, that is your uh, engine and powertrain warranty, so that's going to prevent your big things, your oil, your engines, and stuff like that. Minor things like electrical, the cab, you know, that's not figured into that, but it's just fun to say that, as in the very lengthy worded warranty document, but I just want to make sure that was said by a little lost in the world.
Cause it, it looks like the payoff if you purchase it would be a lot greater at the end of this one, but I don't know that you're tempted to ever buy them at this point? Is your goal to always lease, lease tractors, you think, or?
Yeah, I guess that just kind of depends on the market, I think, right, but if it's good, it's a good job, so yes.
So when would you take possession of them? If we decide to do this, when would you take possession of them? Would you, would the lease, the tractors you got now go back?
The order delivery date would be before your next payment, so then you would still pay, make some new ones before the other one comes due, so you're not double dipping in the same budget cycle. Because you would have done one in December, so you do a new lease before the other one comes due.
How long would it take you to get these?
What was that?
How long would it take to get these tractors?
When I put the bill date in the other time, it was, I think, October, November, October, but that changes. The sooner you go, the more realistic to that date it's going to be.
And the next payment is due in December.
So do we assume some risk in operating those tractors throughout the summer without warranty on them?
Apparently.
For sure. The only thing that's out there right now is emissions warranty.
Which is probably a big one, maybe later.
Yes, that leaves a lot of luck here. I didn't turn out the emissions warranty, because it's harder to find, because emissions regulations change so often. So that doesn't cover much of what your normal wear and tear warranty is what you cover, so.
Is it the same? So this would be a five-year?
Five-year, six-hundred-hour, a year lease, it's the exact same lease parameters as you had it.
Oh, good, because this one says two thousand dollars, that's what I ordered.
That's true. And the warranty?
That's the extended.
That's the warranty, oh, that's just the warranty.
That's just the extended warranty.
Because you're already, you're just, we have hours left in the purchase.
So these numbers for the, I mean, you're just worth, obviously, you're part of our company, so is that possible?
It's not a good relationship with my partner, I'm obviously, you know, I, I'm willing to, I'm a lot more flexible than obviously veterans of it.
That's good, so.
And six-hundred hours, yes, it has value to it, but it's not a substantial credit.
And we've been able to stay in that six-hundred hours pretty well, I mean.
Pretty close to it.
Did the A of my PTO now? Just weird, no fluff though?
Missed that boat, we got the tractor just before we got the snow blower.
Well, that, that small tractor ahead of that blowhard leak kit? Yep.
After the first story, it's about that, you know?
Do we, do we have IVTs now?
Yes. The old ones are forty kilometers an hour, and these ones will go IVT a little bit more, so thirty-three.
Thirty, thirty-one?
Fifty, fifty kilometers, that's how they range it, is the old one's forty, the new one's fifty, so it has that IVT range, just a little higher.
Well, actually, our only concern is operating the, the tractors throughout this year without extended warranty. Should we look at one more year warranty to put on, or, or take a risk? That's...
Two months, it's six months, or something.
And that's tied right, particularly for me, I'm not going to make a decision for you, but your summer work isn't necessarily, or at least pretty much only for the home. I feel as though a lot of your damage risk is, that's going to be more of a winter time use than a summer use.
Yeah, that's what it took, but these are mostly summertime use, it must be hard going if you have a snow blower. Yeah.
But they are, these would be out before, hopefully before, that's...
Let's hope, but it's...
I can price you uh, a six-hundred-hour warranty for lease, and I can have it ready by your next meeting. I just want to make sure of that, all this.
Could it be a lesser one than six-hundred, but it's probably, but it will be that much cheaper.
Yeah, so, yeah, so what we do, six months for five hundred hours would be twenty-seven hundred bucks, twenty-seven sixty-nine. That's for one or no?
That's for one.
That's for each. And that would put your five hundred dollars in debt, so a lot of your smaller things is always going to be a little bit difficult, but you wrote transmission to all engine, you got five hundred dollars.
That's a lot, that's the least, yeah, so that was the least available option, yeah.
Cover us up, tell them that.
How do you know, right?
Um, so that's, these are all just mowers for summers, or you got...
Those are the summer, they're on mowers, and towards fall, they're really common.
What do you think we should do?
Pat would, if Pat would just throw them in as part of the deal, and I do a lot to, you can say, because we're a little, too extra insurance.
Yeah, warranty is a concern, I don't worry too much about it, but it's a pretty good, a pretty good offer.
How many hours are on those machines now? Those are thousands, almost twelve hundred. That was a twelve hundred. Then it's one thousand, one, twelve hundred. I'd have to assess one.
I, I don't see any reason to not uh, to not trade those leases in and start a new five-year lease with the five-year, or with the five years of warranty included. The real question is whether we want to spend, what is it, twenty, how much for six?
About twenty-eight hundred bucks, fair.
Six thousand, just shy of six.
Whereas too, whether we want to spend that, or whether we want to risk having a transmission or engine or front drive or something fail before the end of the year. The tractors are only a couple of years old, the likelihood of that is probably very low, um, I don't know.
I would imagine if you're going to have much issue, like I said, I'm not going to speculate on some of them, taking insurance or not, but I would feel as though you would, you'd see the warning signs already, if something like that is a possibility, but people sell fire insurance and not seeing any warning sightings, they're firing, that's what, but...
I don't think we have any complaints or issues with that, do we?
Have we done like the oil sample or anything on these?
Um, these ones not yet, if you were to purchase a warranty, you would have to do what they oil sample, they send it to a lab, they test it. It's all part of that, yeah.
You know, you said, Pat, they do still have emissions warranty on them, so...
Yeah, but it's a very basic warranty, I mean, it's, it covers...
Like, they have to, yeah, different stuff like that.
There's certain stuff on the depths, and stuff.
But no, yeah, that's the most of the problems I'm believing on them.
Whatever you break on yours, it's not covered.
Does the oil sampling, the assay, or whatever it's called, determine whether or not?
Does the oil sampling, the assay or whatever it's called determine whether or not premium request?
Premium was unchanged, just the eligibility. They show a certain amount of five-metre particles, we're not gonna warranty an engine that is.
Coming out from there, so that's all the thing at that point.
Yeah, once the sampling, once the sampling comes back, then it makes you go, well, not for warranty.
Just like insurance, without, but it's just hard to replace, yeah?
Just a curious, would it be oil or an engine replaced or a transmission replaced if we had something like that?
Ballboard.
Uh, but I would bet more by the time it's out of the shop. You hear all kinds of fifty thousand dollar engines on a forty thousand dollar tractor. Not that these are forty thousand dollar tractors, but.
So actually, we're living at two separate issues in terms of this.
Yes.
I think, didn't you vote to, I second his motion to approve the new purchase or trade the leases in.
Okay, we've got a motion in the second to trade these leased tractors in on two new leased tractors. Is there any discussion on that, motion to just trade the leases in? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now the discussion is about whether to put basically six months of warranty on the existing tractors.
And that's basically the other option there is, at the offer.
After you plug in the tractor data, hours and year and all that, those are the only options that you can.
That's what they split out.
Can we put it on one and choose which one?
What did you say, absolutely?
I just, and if you put it on one or the other, you can put it on the other one.
Not after weeks of.
Not after a week or anything.
Pat, I don't think you're working hard enough.
But that's the best, that, that's the best you can do out of taking this rather.
Yeah, I don't.
You don't probably have to say it.
But it's out of third party one, but that's a job to your corporate, not a, not a C and B.
So how many hours you have to let, a couple hundred hours, you think, to cover both of them or?
We'll put under three hundred hours.
You said twist the bar, right?
I mean, I, I think the risk is very low and, and relative to other risks that we have. If somebody wants to do it, we'll see.
And with your tractor, would you do it? Got one of those tractors, so.
Oh, mine?
Yes. I didn't say, if you had a thousand dollar tractor, I would, you would do it, would you? Not what I know, not what I know within less than six months, I'm trading out of this tractor.
Well, and Pat, Pat's comment is not incorrect. If there was something that was likely to come apart in that tractor, because they're not worn out. If there was something that was not assembled correctly, it would come apart by now, more than likely. But we are at a thousand and twelve hundred dollars, we're not at the point of tractors being worn out by any means. They're, they're basically being tracked.
And I believe, it's, it's, it's a gamble we, I take every morning, you have a fire tractor. So you can.
I can do it. Much love, I mean, Jeff, I just make sure everybody knows, let's be checking for it.
But if, if something fails, the five of us would probably have to cough up the, the, because taxpayers are gonna be like, you guys wouldn't have done anything right. But it's, it's a risk, we do risk all the time.
I'm not aware of any issue with them right now.
I was, I was gonna say that's.
They do check them pretty good.
If we've had any discussion, I would accept a motion to either approve adding warranty or deny adding warranty for the rest of the summer.
I don't know. Well, you need to make a motion about that, I guess.
So that's the consensus of the board, that we don't need to put warranty on them?
We hope.
They wouldn't take our money if they discovered there were oil shavings or bad shavings.
You just got the same thing goes.
If they tell, what they tell us, I thought it was shavings, then maybe I could have been. I, I guess that's what we'll do.
We're paperwork together and I just need two signatures just to get it ordered. So, is board president, not order board president, who's here? I can do a court about that somewhere.
No, no, what we need to sign?
What's that? Okay, perfect. All right, thanks, guys.
We'll take a short break.
I want you to declare those two Mack trucks surplus first. We have a, I'd like to. Act fifteen.
Okay. Motion in the second to surpass the two, two thousand twelve Mack trucks that we replaced with the O-sixes?
I should add, before you do that, I got an approval from, from, through some kind of auction service and they don't expect more than fifteen, twenty thousand. Which I was pretty shocked, but that's what we told them. I don't know why. I guess that's because of where they've been, they just go by history on them.
Can we just?
Play them.
Any second to be in?
They probably wouldn't, because it hasn't cost us anything now, I, I just thought they should be worth more now. They're good trucks.
Should we, uh?
Well, you have the option, you can declare surplus and then if you don't, they push it off, then you just, we'll just make a note for minutes that they're not really sold.
Yeah, well, we could, we could offer them private sale, advertising ourselves, that way we've got more say over what we get out of them.
He kinda suggested that too, maybe advertise for a while and see what you get.
Well, they do, they do have to be declared surplus to sell them, so.
I made that motion.
Look, motion, you seconded break? Got a motion in the second to declare the two twelve Mack's surplus. Is there any discussion on motion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Move, uh, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
We're gonna talk about the thoughts over, or are you gonna take a break?
Let's take a break.
Uh, you just want to get those documents for those tractors.
Oh.
They had a rough for a minute.
We're doing, yeah, yeah. Let's take a break. We'll, we'll recess for a couple minutes. A little bit, till fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I got a question for you. On the curbs there, on the, we got this a, 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 that first curve, like you said, all the curbs in there. They're down there. I mean, they don't even, because I'm an operator.
I didn't, I, I can still send it to the.
I mean, it's gonna be trash or whatever.
Well, I did, I did the first time.
Yeah, because he decided to take the road down and put more cars, so he said, well, let's just wait, see what it looks like when we get the, the water. But we didn't.
Well, I mean, but, but that's a shitload of these garbage, but. Why do you see them? I mean, I've seen the shit, I've seen the last of them. It was always been a lot of city traffic. Because the guy, I was looking at the car going, with the trailer, with the tractor being dragged back. I mean, it's on the road with anyone other, I mean, you get a guy that knows that, a tractor, hate that out.
I think the, the, the soup was very, you had six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and then the flood, that's, it's slower. If you take some, especially that, I'd say, they find that though, where the.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
Well, I, I was saying, they had, they had, it comes, it was a lot of reason that, maybe you're all, you have, you have, so it's good you lose.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree, that's a good question, I agree.
Mr. Washington, he didn't want, want water going, you know? I don't believe you, that, 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 that's icy.
It keeps it on the road, it's still, it's slow.
Yeah, I, I, we're the fall, I heard it's a, it's a, well, then you call, they, they just slow up the water. Well, with big rains like that, there's really nothing that you can do about it because.
It's trash.
Yeah, there's so much trash. And if, well, if we don't turn it under anymore, we just, we let it decay and then when it does do that, because that stuff just, and I mean, when it gets up against something, it can always be about that, like, I don't know about wash.
That we had, it looked like it bowled up pretty good a bit, right?
Oh, it was, it was like that for a while.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it just, it just gets that way all the time, every time that pit runs.
Yeah, so.
Looking way not ready, Bill.
Really?
Better than his group.
Better than that.
That's it, there's the, 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 you gotta have a ready as a, for the other, you're at the top.
It's not tough, really.
Or is it?
You wanna go do that every day? That class?
I was trying to get them to sign it. There's a check. Some of them rise, or.
It's a marble, at least it's not like seven. Yeah, they asked me, I told them, I, I gotta have two. Can we ask how much that L R works? It's, it's not even like two dollars a sheet. I mean, they always act like those big damn wheels.
How for you? Eat those cookies now.
Pretty lucky, you could raise it out.
That's a damn, that'd be hoping already, fifty, exactly. Now, I, I have a fan. I rock the tackle ticket, thirty, I have a fan.
Fan with Jim, that's dirty, I'll put.
I like them when they're careful of place, right? Not syrup.
Trap, that, that, the holders, just the trap, put it up on the side, kind of, some type of, around, and, so I sent one text. Went and dumped a whole bunch of drink, crap, went there and I was sent all the black sneaky stuff, I said, screw the trap, I'll clean it out.
So we can sign one of these and it'll be official.
Yeah, he drops it off the horsepower, so that makes a difference. It's had seven, that's had, seven checks.
I'm gonna have to look up, see what, what kind of leases we could redo on our job at the work.
Yeah, in fact, I have on, um, I, I think they had a full, what they used to have, I don't think exactly, maybe they don't have anymore. But they had it for government, got to get some rates there.
Yeah, I think they should probably do, you know?
That next page is the second tractor's power drive. These are just the.
Yeah.
And you think it would be almost the other way around, but the turn tire, or, or, or.
And where, where is that, where does that break? It's gotta be a little, a little, a little, a little, a little. Hundred one, you got it, yeah.
So, we get that back.
I think it's gotta be the whole.
Six hundred.
So neither one of these, did that, that ninety-five or twenty-four? I wonder if this new one's.
It does, yeah. It might be a very exact one.
Oh, it's, or maybe it's a week. I was thinking, I was like, it's a week, you know, I was looking, I'm, I mean, I was looking, I just happened to see a tractor that was like, uh, seventy horsepower. And it didn't have that. Uh, well, see, that's, that's odd.
I think it is eighty, because I was looking, I was looking at skin motors and, and that kind of is in my range, you get a lot of seventy, ninety, forty, skin motors.
One to the other.
And in the high one, I think it's seven hundred, that's the new, seven hundred horse tractors don't have that.
Once it gets so high.
Really? Which makes sense, so we don't have to.
No, they just kept it in their, their, their.
Yeah, but I can, you can count here.
There you go.
Pretty sure.
Get a seven hundred horse feeding tractor. Yeah, there you go, that's, that's the worst of it. They all got that.